So I'll gavel us in. So, uh, welcome everyone. This is a regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council on Wednesday, March seventeenth, and we're actually starting pretty much on time. So I want to welcome everyone who's, uh, here for official and other purposes. And I think we'll get started with the roll call and pledge of allegiance. So Allison, can you get us started?
Councilmember Candell.
I'm here.
Councilmember Paulson.
He, he may be just, uh, transitioning, so.
Okay, I do see you there. Oh, um, okay, we'll have him join again in just a moment. Councilmember Way.
Here.
Vice Mayor Helmer.
Here.
Mayor Harrow.
I am here. Uh, and with that, we'll do the pledge of allegiance. So let's get started. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Councilmember Way is muted.
I'm muted, sorry.
There you go. The United States of America. And to-
For which it stands.
One nation- Under God. With liberty- And justice-
For all.
All. Thank you for that. Okay, so that's our first item, and we will go to public comment for matters that are not listed on the agenda. This is a time for members of the public who wish to comment on things that are not on, on the agenda, uh, to address the city council. Um, uh, I don't know if we have anybody out there who's wanting to do that tonight, but if you, we do, let's make sure we keep our comments to, uh, three minutes or less. So Allison, anybody out there?
Looking for any raised hands from our audience members or any emails, public comments. And there is no public comment.
Okay. All right. In that case, let me figure out where my cursor is, and I will scroll down to, uh, agenda item number three, which is presentations and proclamations. So we have two items in this agenda item, uh, three point one is the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority presentation from Executive Director Mark Brown. So Mark, are you here? There he is.
I am. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Um, as mentioned, my name is Mark Brown, and I have the privilege of being, um, the executive officer for the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority. A little bit about my background, uh, I was hired with the Marin County Fire Department in nineteen ninety-one and promoted through the ranks and retired as deputy fire chief in September of twenty twenty, and to, in order to assume the position of the executive officer. And over my thirty-plus years of wildland firefighting, I've seen firsthand a change in the wildland fire environment. Uh, I've seen the need to act now. We need to change what we've been doing. Um, it has been obvious for quite some time, but I would say that the fire season of twenty twenty put an exclamation point on it, and we really need to act in a holistic and coordinated fashion for the safety of the residents in Marin. And I really believe through all of our partnerships of our seventeen-member agencies and all of our stakeholders, the MWPA is poised to do that. Uh, we really must work together. Uh, fire agencies, law enforcement, local government, our land management agencies, our environmental stakeholders, and I'll make an argument that most importantly, we need our community members to be engaged. Um, it's really easy to focus on the mega fires. Those are the ones that we see in the news, um, all summer long. But as much as we see them and as many- still only one percent of the fire in California. And I really believe that we need to focus on the ninety-nine percent of those fires, the fires that we really can make a difference, and we approach those with a houseout approach. And the great thing about that is if everyone does their part, everyone does home hardening, everyone does defensible space in and around their homes, and then we, as the government and local agencies, work for evacuation route clearings, then we become much more prepared for those one percent fires. And another reason to stay focused on the ninety-nine percent fires, and this happened in the Twin Cities area, the last fire season, is that a three-acre fire can impact homes faster than the fire engine can get there. And if we have homes that can defend themselves without a fire engine under those conditions, then that makes it even better under the mega fire conditions. And that literally did happen this last fire season, um, in Larkspur. Small vegetation fire bumped up against some great defensible space work that had been done both by members of the public and, um, through a grant that was secured by Central Marin Fire and a work that was done by the TAM Fire Crew made a difference. The, the house was saved without any suppression efforts. So we really need to focus on vegetation management projects in and around our communities, improve the safety of our evacuation routes, increase the community awareness, and improve our notification systems. And as I mentioned before, the, the members of the public have to be engaged, and they have to assume the responsibility that they have in their own property. Uh, part of the initiative allows for local member agencies to use their local mitigation project money for projects, and, um, I believe, uh, Chief Martin will be available to touch on any of the projects that were in Larkspur. And while we're talking about Chief Martin, um, I think you guys probably realize what a great team you have with Central Marin Fire. Chief Martin and, and Chief Lando, both people that I had the opportunity to work with at Marin County Fire, they are amazing, and they have provided excellent leadership, not just for Central Marin Fire, but across the entire county. And, um, we are where we're at in large part because of them, and also put a shout out to, uh, Dan Schwartz, um, his involvement in the formation of MWPA was vital, and I continue to use him as a resource as I work through my position. The voters did speak loud and clear. I would say seventy-point-eight percent, uh, passage was a very clear message, and they want it done with a priority. They want us to be efficient and effective. And so I think we had got off to a great start this year. Uh, very successful partnership with Fire Safe Marin with our chipper days, and we are looking to increase the amount of chipper, uh, visits, curbside pickups by fifty percent next year. So that's going to be a, a, a big increase. Every member agency of the MWPA will be involved, and we will have chipper days in every community. The public education program, the Fire Safe Marin, has been used, uh, putting forth, has, um, been so popular that they've had to increase their, their accounts so that they can have more people attending their meetings, and they have just been getting the premier scientists, the premier, uh, fire experts for these. It's been amazing. Uh, we have purchased one thousand NOAA weather radios, talking about, uh, notifications, and we know that, um, with the terrain in Marin, cell coverage isn't the best, and relying on cell coverage is going to be a failure if that's our only way of notification. And I think one of the things we've missed is when we talk about all our technology, we forget to remind everyone what the number one way we intend to notify people of, to need to be evacuated, and that's law enforcement and fire personnel going up and down the streets telling people to evacuate. That's number one. Number two is all the, the reverse nine-one-one, uh, email notifications, text notifications, those are backups. What we're looking for with the NOAA weather radios is this is a tried and true VHF radio system that we know that penetrates throughout the entire county. So with, um, our new evacuation platform, Zone Haven, which I'll talk about a little bit later, we'll have some exercises, and we'll combine notification of Zone Haven with the NOAA radios to check the effectiveness of the NOAA radios. One of the key points of getting people out in time is for them to know it's actually a red flag day and that we have heightened fire danger. So red flag signage, we were working with Fire Safe Marin and our firewise communities and our local agencies to have red flag signs that can be put up so that we know that it is a heightened fire weather day. And then evacuation, I'm really happy with the process, our progress that we have made with evacuations. Uh, most of you, I'm sure all of you saw the grand jury report, uh, talking about evacuations and then subsequent, um, editorials in the IGA and other articles. And quite frankly, I think that report was outdated the day it was published because we had made so much progress from the time that they started drafting that report to the time it was published. We are working very well across all of the jurisdictions. We had our Zone Haven kickoff meeting, uh, last month in February, and according to Zone Haven, it was the most well-attended kickoff meeting that they have had throughout the Bay Area, and one of the only counties that had active involvement with the public works agencies. And we felt it was important to have public works involved because as much as the fire personnel and the law enforcement personnel think they know the roads, no one knows the roads better than public works people. And to be able to get their feedback and input and data is going to be vital to make an effective evacuation plan. We, um, have five different geographical teams that are working together to build the Zone Haven platform, and they will, um, work within their geographical areas. Uh, Chief Martin is, uh, working closely, and Chief Lando will be working closely with the rest of the fire agencies, and, um, Chief Norton is taking the lead for the law enforcement for the Ross Valley, and as far, that's mostly for coordination. And then once those five geographical areas are completed, we'll wrap that up into the entire county, and then we'll start having exercises and a know-your-zone campaign so the public knows about what zone they're in and how to use Zone Haven. And, um, we look at May being when we can go live with Zone Haven. And then looking forward for twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year, our operations committee and our advisory technical committee have their path. They're working diligently, they're, um, with their core projects and their local mitigation projects. So we're looking at ten million dollars of core projects this year. So we are, we have a very aggressive plan, and, um, nothing that has happened with that within the MWPA could be possible without the excellent partnership of all seventeen of our member agencies. We have so much talent, and I continue to exploit that, uh, especially since I'm still the only full-time employee at the MWPA. Uh, I hope to hire a planning and program manager soon, but I really need to lean on all of our, um, member agencies. Like I said, we'll be, um, increasing our chipper days by at least fifty percent. Uh, we are looking forward to initiating some grant programs. Uh, we're exploring low-income defensible space grant programs and then matching home hardening grant programs. And we feel that we are in a great position to leverage our organization and go after state grants that are aimed at the, those specific grant programs, but individuals can't apply for them, but government agencies can. So we can bring that revenue in and make it just a straight pass-through to, um, our members, the, the citizens of Marin. And we see that it, it, our goal is to increase our revenue through our own grant applications that for every dollar that a resident is putting in, we're getting another fifty cents to another dollar, um, by the time we're all done with our aggressive grant programs. And with that, I'll, I'll lean to you. Oh, actually, you know what? I did want to mention one more thing. Our D-space evaluations were, um, very thorough and effective last year, but quite frankly, some of the jargon that we use as firefighters going and talking to the residents and some of the codes that we mentioned aren't necessarily digestible, or they, they don't mean much to the members of the public. So Todd Lando has been taking the lead on improving how we do our D-space evaluations and how we communicate what we found with those D-space evaluations. And he's working with a software firm to, uh, make it live time, make it so that the, all of our information goes into the same set of dat- data pools throughout the county and actually throughout the state. And the presentation he gave at the operations committee was amazing, and every agency looked at it in the MWPA, said we need, that, that's exactly what we need. So, um, that's just a small example of the leadership that you guys have within your organization that's going to help the entire county. And so with that, I'll, I'll open it up to any questions from you.
Well, that was terrific. That was, that was a lot. So I'm gonna, we got all kinds of hands raised. I think, um, uh, Scott, you were the first one up.
Uh, Mark, fantastic presentation. Um, my question for you is for the person who is watching this, uh, a- at home, uh, and has not been following along, and says, wow, that was a great presentation. I want to make my home defensible. I want to create defensible space. I want to, you know, learn more about this. Uh, is there a website or something that you can point those people to, uh, so that they can, uh, can start, uh, be more, more involved?
Absolutely, and, uh, excellent question. And we, it's going to sound weird. I'm not going to say go to the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority website, and we're, we, I'm going to say go to Fire Safe Marin's website, firesafemarin.org, and we purposely did that is that we don't want to confuse the residents about which website to go to, and Fire Safe Marin really is the public ed- education arm of the MWPA. They are probably the oldest Fire Safe Council in the state, and in my biased opinion, the best Fire Safe Council in the state. And, um, I live in Stoneham County, and I hear my neighbors saying, oh yeah, I found, I learned this on Fire Safe Marin's website. So, um, I, I know how good it is, and again, they are our public education arm. Excellent website. That's the best place to get their information.
Great, thanks. And, uh, Catherine, I think you're the next one up.
Hi, Mark. Nice to see you.
Good seeing you.
Um, I, I've had the pleasure of being asked to sit on the Fire Safe Marin Board about a year and a half ago, and I will say that's probably the most effective board I've ever sat on. They do a tremendous amount of work, and they're very, uh, if they're very task-oriented and task accomplishing. So at, at Friday's board meeting, there was a presentation about that Marin is now entering into a drought year, and it's official. Um, what are the ideas that the MWPA has about how to deal with the current upcoming drought situation? And then how would we communicate to residents about, um, making sure they don't draw down our water supply when needed for possible, uh, firefighting?
That, that's a great, like, another great question. Um, I would say for our long-term path, that the fact that we are going into another drought actually doesn't change. The, the fuel conditions are changing despite the one or two years that we were out of a drought. Uh, the fuel conditions take several years to be able to recover, and even if we get back into a normal rain cycle, the accumulation of fuel and the unhealthiness of our forests really dictates that we need to stay on the path. So, duh, the fact that we're in a drought this year, I don't think it really changes our course. We were already on a good path. However, water conservation in order to maintain water supplies is very important. Um, I've just read a recent, um, study about the campfire and a procedure that they had in place with the Paradise Water Company, is that under red flag conditions, they would make sure that all their water tanks were topped off. And so I want to make sure that we partner with MMWD, and then for the other parts of the county, North Marin Water District and the water purveyors, that we have similar policies in place.
Yeah, I recall once, uh, at a meeting hearing that it sometimes takes up to forty-eight hours to repump, uh, up to some of our, our fire containment structures, um, water structures. So I think that's going to be an important messaging, especially since we hit, once we hit September and October, uh, that water conservation is key, not just, uh, for our drinking supply, but for our firefighting supply. So thank you for that.
And, and the good news about predictions of red flags is forty-eight hours. We are typically aware of a red flag that's coming forty-eight, seventy-two, and sometimes ninety-six hours in advance.
And the new red flag design, um, which allows then for dual messaging, uh, I think that that's a really great community tool, because when it's not being used for red flag, it could be used to advertise, you know, sign up for Alert Marin or NRGs or whatever. I think that was a really, um, a creative way of looking at using a resource and using it for double or triple purposes. So thanks for that idea.
Uh, I'll give credit to Rich Shortall on that one. Definitely wasn't mine.
Okay.
Rich, Rich is a fire, uh, a firebrand. How's that?
Uh, he's, he, he's great, man. He, he puts a lot of energy in everything he does.
Okay, Catherine, anything, anything more? Okay, I'm seeing you're nodding, you're shaking your head, and I think, uh, Vice Mayor Helmer has his hand up.
Hi, Mark. Thanks for a wonderful presentation. Thanks for all of your, of your work, as well as, uh, all of the member agencies. Uh, my question has to go, goes back to the radio information you were providing. Um, then y- you mentioned NOAA radios, or radio, uh, help me under, uh, better describe it. Is that, is that, is that intended to be a one-way public communication?
Yes, it is. So NOAA, the, the, uh, basically National Weather Service radio, and they were designed for weather alerts. They weren't necessarily designed for wildfire alerts, and they, they work very similar as far as, um, the focus that you can deliver a message similar to an emergency broadcast system. So if we were, when we use the NOAA ra- weather radios, it will be a county-wide broadcast that will have to have information that is, that can allow the citizens to know that we're not talking about the entire county, that we would be talking about a specific area of the county. It is a one-way transmission, and the radios that we purchased were Midland radios. If you, if you Google, uh, NOAA, you'll see that, but it is a one-way radio transmission, and it would help residents become more fully aware what's going on and point them in a direction to get more information.
And who would have possession of these radios?
So as far as possession of being able to send a message or receiving the message?
Receiving.
Receiving, or, so we are working with our member agencies to, um, the one thousand radios that we purchased are a beta test, and so we'll rely on our member agencies to pick who they will be distributing them to. A lot of the, um, neighborhood response groups are people that we're targeting because they're the ones that are actively involved and who we have a good dialogue with, and we can get feedback from them. Um, eventually, though, it could be a recommendation that we asked or encouraged the entire county to have those in their homes.
Thank you.
Quick, quick question. What, what is the cost of those, uh, receivers?
It's like twenty-five dollars.
I bought one on Amazon. They're about twenty-four ninety-five or something, the same one that they have on Fire Safe Marin, um, as suggested one. But you have to make sure you have your batteries in it, else it's just not going to work.
Yeah, and we, with the thousand that we bought, there was a battery issue, but the, the, the bender made, made, made us whole on that.
But thank you for answering the question, wh- which is, uh, you've effectively integrated it into the Neighborhood Response Group Incident Command, uh, system. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any, anything else from other members of the council? Um, so this is, this is, uh, Kevin, and I just wanted to, um, chime in on the Midland radios. I bought one of those things about a year and a half ago, and they work. You know, that you, you can get different, different, and then you can get them on Amazon. Um, and there's different models that you can get, and you can get fancier ones and less fancy ones. Like, I think I paid about seventy bucks for the one that I have, and I have it next to my bed in my bedroom, and, um, I've gotten alerts on that thing. You can listen to NOAA weather reports. It's all, it's, it's great. So I encourage everyone to, uh, get one of those and have them in their, in their homes. Um, when you have an alert, the thing goes crazy, and it lets you know what's go, lets you, lets you know what's going on. So, uh, a- again, uh, thank you so much, Mark. Um, uh, did you have any, anyone else that you wanted to supplement your presentation? I think, yeah, we have a couple of, of our chiefs, or, or I don't know how you want to do that.
Well, um, I would open it up to Chief Martin. If you guys had any questions or had any desire to hear, um, any of the local mitigation projects that Central Marin Fire has been conducting within the town or the city limits of Larkspur.
Yeah, uh, Chief Martin, Chief Lando, I mean, whoever you got who wants to chime in at this point.
Um, thank you, Mayor Harrow. This is Chief Martin, uh, members of the council. Uh, Chief Brown, thank you for that presentation. I think it was phenomenal. I think you nailed it right on the head of, uh, where we're going, what we need to do for fire protection for our communities. Um, as you've been aware, uh, Central Marin has been utilizing a lot of the funds that we've, um, were able to, uh, sustain through the MWPA to create a lot of our local mitigation projects. Um, we primarily have the fire adaptive style of community, looking at the houseout approach, assisting with the sensible space through evaluations. I believe last year, we hit close to two thousand homes along the western edge of our community, up along the Madone Canyon and into, uh, the Crypts of Tree Hill area. Um, and then also with the CAL FIRE grant, we were able to, uh, clear out, um, a lot of our evacuation routes, primarily identified through Madone Canyon, because we identified that's one of our critical key target hazard areas because of the limited ingress and egress out of there. Um, and then we're also identified, uh, several other areas within the community. For example, right now, we're finishing up a project on, uh, Pa- in the base of Palm Hill, and, uh, removing a lot of the hazardous fuels by broom pulling, broom removal, and in some cases, tree or hazardous tree removals such as, uh, eucalyptus trees. Um, so we're, we've got projects throughout, uh, the community. You can go on to centralmarinfire.org under our prevention site, you, to look at all of, uh, the projects that are currently going on. Um, and then with the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year, um, with the MWPA, uh, projects, we're currently looking at both core and local mitigation projects. With the core project, we're kind of emphasizing and collaborating with all of our neighbors within the Ross Valley, and doing the fire adaptive community, um, looking at the houseout approach within that hundred feet of each structure, and then evaluating all of our evacuation routes to see what we're, we can do to, uh, either eliminate or reduce some of the hazardous, hazardous fuels that are along the roadside. That, I think, is a primary key for this year, and I think it'll go hand in glove with, uh, with the Zone Haven evacuation route study that's coming out. Um, we'll be able to assist, uh, Zone Haven in identifying the key areas and choke points that we already have and have identified within the county and within our community. Um, you know, it's, we're very excited to have MWPA. I've always, uh, had the vision as, when I had the seat as fire marshal, if we had funding, what are the projects we can do? And it's kind of nice to see that MWPA is one of those, um, agencies that does provide tax funding, that we see projects and work happening immediately. We don't see anything happen twenty years down the road. We're actually seeing the in that initial impact of our fuels mitigation efforts immediately. And our homeowners, I, I believe, and I'm hopeful that they're seeing all the efforts that we're putting into to try to make the community safer. With that, um, I'll open it up to any questions that you may have for me.
I see Catherine raising your hand. Go ahead.
Hi, Chief Martin. Can I, um, ask you, this, this will be the second year of, um, using the inspections, uh, property inspections with the MWPA. Um, if that you, uh, do a secondary inspection and find that a homeowner has not mitigated, uh, the recommendations from the previous year, are there new enforcement strategies this year, or what are the enforcement plans so that it's a little bit more of a hammer than it's been in the past?
Yes, um, so we're trying a couple of different models. We've tried the hammer in the past. We've tried the carrot. Uh, we've tried even the bigger hammer, and what it ends up doing is what we see is a lot of staff hours and time associated with just trying to abate one single property. For example, it can take up to twelve months just to go through the entire abatement process. So what we're doing is trying it this year is a little bit of both of the carrot and the hammer. Um, and what we're trying to, what we're actually have been seeing is when homeowners aren't doing their defensible space, a lot of times it comes back to financial resources. They don't have, um, the money to do it or don't know where to begin. So what we're doing now is when we find homeowners that have not done the work, we then, um, make re-contact with that person, try to figure out what was the reasoning why they didn't do their defensible space. Was it they got the notice and threw it in the round file and didn't pay attention to it, or forgot with everything else that's going on life, or is it a financial reason? And with the, if it ends up coming down to a financial reason, then that's where we're starting to use some of our, um, MWPA local mitigation dollars and try to do those, um, voluntary abatements. And we've been having, we've tried a couple of those this year, and we've gotten so much farther than we would have if we would have gone through the whole legal process of trying to abate it.
Great idea. Thanks for that.
Yeah, at the end of the day, it's just to try to get the vegetation and the work done.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions from, from council?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just have a comment.
Please, go ahead.
That last item where, uh, Chief Martin described, uh, the conditions under which they're able to optimize the use of those dollars. I think, I think that's just, uh, a wonderful, uh, display of right-minded thinking on the part of, uh, our, uh, staff as well as the, uh, wildfire prevention program. I, I just can't tell you how much that, uh, focuses the effort for me as opposed to wasting the money on unnecessary, uh, strong-arming of, of property owners. I think, understanding the reasons why the mitigations can't take place, and then optimizing the use of the funds, I think that's, I think it's brilliant. Splendid work. Thank you.
Yeah, good comment. Uh, so, uh, with, with that, um, uh, Chief Lando, did, uh, anything on that side, or are we kind of wrapping it up? Mark?
I, I, I don't know if, uh, if Todd's going to be on today or not. I think it was just going to be Chief Martin.
Okay, that's fine. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't understand that. So anyway, this was a terrific presentation all the way around, very helpful to all of us. This is a, a, a critical issue that we're all nervous about as we're heading into the year. Um, uh, it's stunning, after all the rain that we've had recently, that we would be thinking that we're in drought conditions, but I guess that's where we are. So, um, keep up the good work. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Um, Mayor Harrow.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I believe it's a presentation, and I, it looks like you have a participant with a hand up. I believe it's a presentation and I, it looks like you have a participant with a hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Allison, do we have a public comment?
We do, yes.
Oh, good.
Our first public comment will come from Kevin Carroll.
Okay, good.
Thank you, board. And this is really for Chief Martin. And first, thank you. I live at the Marin Mobile Home Park. So thanks for the. Quick response to the fires last year in the quarter of Madera Marsh. And that's actually the area I have a question about on the gravel dirt road between the Lazy Boy and the pump station. On the eastern side are a number of dead trees. And it looks like piles of wood that I think the homeless were using for firewood. And they, some of them are already cut and just kind of stacked there. Some are already burnt, like someone has tried to. Set them on fire. I don't know if it was the homeless or. I hate to be sexist, but juvenile boys, I believe are, have a large attraction to setting fires. And I'm wondering if there's any problem with cleaning it up. I know ecologically, it's nice to let them, the dead wood lie there and the insects decompose. But given our homeless situation out there and that path is used by a lot of adolescent boys. It was possible to do a cleanup out there of the dead wood. Thank you.
Yeah, I can respond to that if, if it's appropriate, Mayor Haroff.
Yeah, no, please go ahead.
Yeah, so yeah, you're correct. Last year we did have a few fires out in the marsh. Some were arson. Related, others were homeless encampments that escaped their cooking and warming fire. It's a big issue for us. The big component with the cleanup, as you mentioned, is the environmental impacts that it has within the marsh. I'll work with both Public Works Directors to see and Public Works crews will go out there to evaluate it and see where we can. Clean up what we can. I, other than that, we, the marsh isn't one of our bigger concerns for major wildfires to come out of there. Just based on where your wind patterns, you have roadways, there aren't a lot of structures out there that are threatened. However, it is a big ecological concern for us. So we'll go out there and take a look and see what, where we can clean up some of the property out there.
Good, that's a, that's a really good comment and good response. So we appreciate that, that extra effort. Anyone else in the public? Allison?
Looking for any further raised hands from our audience members or any emailed public comments? And there is no further public comment.
Okay, great. Well, again, Mark and everyone, thank, thanks so much for a wonderful presentation. It's really. Encouraging to see us making progress on this front where we haven't in the, in the past as much and it's just terrific. So I appreciate it.
My pleasure. And anytime you would like me to come give you a presentation, I'd be happy to do so.
We may have you come every time. You never know.
I'll talk with Mrs. Brown, see how she feels about that.
Yeah, she won't like that. That's all right. Okay, all right. Well, I think that wraps that one up. So let's go on to Agenda Item 3.2 Climate Action Plan Update Presentation from Christine O'Rourke. Sustainability Coordinator for Marin Climate and Energy Partnership and MCEP. So are we ready to go with that?
Yes, Mayor Haroff, this is Planning Director Todd, Planning and Building Director Todd. And before we bring on Christine, I just wanted to give a little bit of background quickly.
Sure.
For the council, why we're here tonight. Climate planning, climate action planning began in earnest in Larkspur back in 2007 when the city adopted. A resolution resolving to participate in Cities for Climate Protection Campaign. And pledge to take a leadership role in promoting public awareness and the causes and impacts of climate change. In 2009, we adopted our first greenhouse gas emissions for the year 2005 as our first inventory. And at that time, the city council directed staff to prepare a climate action plan to reduce government and community emissions over the next 10 years. To meet the goals of AB 32. So in 2010, the city did adopt a climate action plan with GHG emissions reduction target of 15% below. 2005 levels by 2020. We've been implementing a number of those measures over the years. The community. Has been responsive and certainly a lot of this is through other actions like MCE. Changes in mission standards for cars and, and things like that. But the city has been conducting regular inventories over the last several years. And doing it in conjunction with the Marin Climate and Energy Partnership, MCEP. And their sustainability coordinator, Christine O'Rourke, who's with us tonight. We have achieved those reductions and are now endeavoring to adopt a new or updated climate action plan for the next 10 years. To address GHG target reductions of no less than 30% below 1990 levels by 2030. To meet recent state legislation. We have been working with Christine since 2018 for about three years now. And we have prepared with her this draft climate action plan to meet this ambitious goal. The draft plan is modeled upon. The best practices and up to date measures and policies we've seen recently adopted by other agencies within MCEP, particularly. Santa Fel adopted their plan in 2019 and the county ran recently adopted theirs. And so we are working somewhat off of those efforts. And with that, I would like to clarify that tonight is meant as an introduction to the draft. It's our intent to take public comment on the draft. And then return to the city council for further public review on April 21st. I know there are some comments that were received as late mail and certainly are encouraging. More opportunity for public review and that is the intent tonight. With that, I'll like to introduce our consultant on the project, Christine O'Rourke. To provide an overview of our draft climate action plan.
Great, welcome, Christine.
Thank you. Thanks, Neil. I'm Christine O'Rourke and I'm a Sustainability Coordinator for the Marin Climate and Energy Partnership. I have a presentation for tonight, so let me share my screen.
There it is.
Okay. So tonight I just wanted to give you an overview of the draft climate action plan that we are bringing forward tonight for your comment. And the plan is, as Neil just said, it's an update to the city's climate action plan that was adopted in 2010. That plan was designed to meet the 2020 emissions reduction target. That was 15% below 2005 levels or in statewide parlance, it was to reduce emissions to 1990 levels. And so as I'll show you in the next couple of slides, the city actually has already met that goal and now it's time to kind of turn our sights to the 2030 goal. The state has adopted a reduction goal and, you know, through legislation through SB 32. Which is to reduce emissions 40% below 1990 levels by the year 2030. So that is the goal that we have incorporated into this draft. Climate action plan and we have a little, a way that we convert 1990 levels to 2005 levels. But anyway, we are kind of on the same target here is what the state is looking for. So also as Neil just mentioned, we are utilizing a template that was developed through the Marin Climate and Energy Partnership. It was first developed in the city of Santa Fel. I worked with Santa Fel over actually the course of a year. They had. A climate action committee and we brought in a lot of subject matter experts over that year to kind of craft the first template. And then that template has been used by other jurisdictions. So it was adopted and, you know, it's tailored to fit the individuals need, individual jurisdictions needs. It was adopted in San Anselmo and then we took it and we brought it. We created a plan for the County of Marin, which was adopted just last fall. And, and so as it goes through each stage, we kind of refine it, we get more public comment and we. So the plan that you have is kind of the best of the best right now. So the, one of the things that we really wanted to be sure we do with this climate action plan is to identify the most impactful strategies. And, and then develop those strategies based on achievable performance targets as well as kind of. You know, reasonable assumptions. We're basing it on past performance, also substantial evidence that what we're. Expect to happen through the, through the implementation of the programs. This chart here is showing emissions from the Larkspur community in 2018. And it's showing the missions by source here. I usually show it by sector, but this is kind of interesting because it shows that. Almost half of the emissions are coming from passenger cars. And then the next biggest slice here is from natural gas consumption. That's at 29%. So it's natural gas used to heat homes and businesses and, and used in appliances. So those are really the two biggest sectors and that's where we're going to kind of need to focus a lot of our attention on if we're going to get to that target to reduce emissions. 40% below 1990 levels. Another thing that's kind of interesting is that this electricity slice here is only at 8%. And that's because the electricity has, is really pretty clean and getting cleaner. I'll talk about a little bit more about that later on in the presentation. But there's just not that much more emissions to get out of the, the electricity source here. So this is a look at the trend in Larkspur's community emissions. Going back to 2005, we do emissions inventories every year. And it really helps to keep us on track and kind of make adjustments as we go along. The, the red line there is the 2020 target, which was 15% below 1990 emissions. It's equivalent to 1990 levels. And so by the year 2018, the city was at 23% below 2005 levels. So the target was 15, so 8% more than that. And that's equivalent to about 9% below 1990 levels. So if we're looking to go to 40% below, we need another 31% essentially to, to get there. And that's what this chart is essentially showing. So the actual emissions now is being shown here by this blue line. And the business as usual forecast is what we are forecasting emissions will be. We're looking out to 2050. So we're using forecasts from the regional agencies, Bay Area Metro. Assumptions or projections for population growth, job growth. We're looking at VMT projections from the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. We have those emissions going out to 2040. And then between 2040 and 2050, we're actually using Department of Finance projections for Marin County population growth. And they're showing a decline in growth. So the picture gets a little fuzzier after 2040, but that is what the forecast looks like. So the green line is showing what our emissions reductions are and what the target is for the climate action plan, which is this 2030 target to. Get to the 40% below 1990 levels and to put the city on a trajectory to reach this 2050 target. 80% below 1990 levels. That's a, a goal that the state has. It's been kind of enshrined in a couple of different executive. From the, that they, that the governors have issued, but it's not actually in state legislation. Executive orders, that was the word I was searching for. So the climate action plan is divided into a few different sections, arranged around these topic areas. One of them is transportation, transportation sector. Most of the emissions here are coming from electric vehicles. And so I'm just going to give you kind of a high level summary of each one of these sectors. In transportation, first of all, kind of the, the background information is around state goals. The state has got some pretty aggressive. Goals around electric vehicles. They want to have 5 million EVs on the road by 2030. That would equate to about 13% of registered vehicles by 2030. Governor Newsom ordered, did a, issued an executive order. Just a few months ago that requires to require all new passenger vehicles sold in California to be zero emission by 2035. And then medium and heavy duty trucks by 2045. So these are all really pointing to a lot more support on the state level for more. EVs and now with the new administration, hopefully we're going to be getting more, some federal support as well about, about zero emission vehicles. I should also mention that zero emission vehicles, when I use that term, I'm talking about both battery electric vehicles that are, you know, completely run on batteries and. Also hybrid electric that you plug in. And, and fuel cell vehicles, which we don't have very many of in Marin County. So Marin County has the second highest EV rate in the state. We're just behind Santa Clara County. Here in Marin, at this point, about 4% of passenger vehicles registered in Marin County are zero emission vehicles. And that's true in Larkspur as well. It's about 268 ZEVs as of January 2020. DMV is finally issuing statistics on the type of fuel that's used in vehicles that are registered in the towns. And that's, that's, they provide that every January of the year. So we can keep track now of how we're progressing with the ZEVs. So the car, the cap is targeting 30%, 33%, about one third of passenger vehicles to be zero emission vehicles in Larkspur by the year 2030. It's an aggressive goal, but one that we think is achievable. I'll note that like the Santa Fel plan, which was, you know, created essentially two years ago, has a goal of 25%. And with the growth in EVs and the new commitments by the, the automobile manufacturers like GM, who's that has announced that they're going to be. Just, just producing zero emission vehicles, I think by the year 2035. Now we really see that a lot of this and also just new commitments from the, from the state. We think that we can kind of up that goal and make it 33%. So there's a series of actions in the climate action plan about how to support this goal and get to it. There's things like requiring more multi workplace and multifamily EV chargers. Installing EV ready parking spaces, installing more public EV chargers, fast chargers in particular, wayfinding signage. There's a, quite a few things. I will also mention that we are now working, MCEP is working on a countywide readiness plan. That will kind of flesh out a lot of the details that are in the climate action plan. And we're working on that. We have funding through TAM to develop that plan. And so you will be, we'll be bringing that forward to you hopefully in about a year. So the next thing about transportation, of course, is, you know, it's not just all about. Electric vehicles. There's also alternative forms of transportation that we are encouraging and supporting and, and trying to increase. So increasing biking and walking, particularly by. Implementing the city's bicycle and pedestrian master plan, kind of building out that infrastructure, providing the facilities and the programs that are identified in that plan. Continuing to support safe routes to school programs. Encouraging employers to provide transportation demand management, demand management programs. It's something that's actually required by the Bay Area Air Quality Management District for any employer. That has 50 or more employees. So we can actually partner with the air district to make sure that that's happening to all the employers in Larkspur. And there's programs for Marin Transit and Golden Gate Transit to expand their ridership, also electrify the fleet, something. That is required through state legislation as well. Encourage SMART to use renewable diesel, also to use renewable diesel in the city's fleet for vehicles that are currently using diesel. And then there's a program to electrify the city's fleet. And that's essentially, you know, the, the light duty vehicles to make them all electric by 2030 and also to electrify small off-road equipment. So that's like landscape equipment, essentially. Leaf blowers, lawn mowers, et cetera. So moving on to the renewable energy and electrification section, this is kind of the, the next big section area where we can get some big emissions reductions. Again, as I mentioned earlier, electricity is already clean and getting cleaner. MCE expects to be virtually 100% free by 2022. Actually, PJ and E's electricity in 2019 was almost 100% greenhouse gas free, like less than 1% GHG free. So, so we're on a terrific track here. The state law is also requiring that 60% of electricity come from renewable sources by 2030 and be GHG free by 2045. So, so that's all good news. We also see PV installation is continuing to grow. It supplied about 5% of the local electricity in Larkspur in 2018. And so we're projecting in the climate action plan through by continuing to encourage solar installation. That solar PV will provide about 10% of electricity, local electricity needs by 2030. And that's just maintaining the current growth rate. And that's just maintaining the current growth rate. And, um, so the programs are not just to encourage solar installation, but also battery storage. And that's particularly important because of the public safety power shut-off events that, um, we keep having and probably will continue to have. So two of the big new programs here in this section, um, are ones that have been adopted by the County of Marin. Also they're in the, the new, um, Climate Action Plans, Fairfax's draft of Climate Action Plan has one of these. And we're also seeing these kind of ordinances now being, um, adopted in other cities around the state. So one of these ordinances is to require residential buildings to be all electric beginning in 2023. So that would be with the next building cycle that which the building code gets adopted by the end of 2022. So the first of January 2023 is when that goes into effect. So this is to, um, adopt a reach code that requires all residential buildings to be all electric. And then with the next code cycle, which would begin in January of 2026, to require all non-residential buildings to be all electric. And then another program is to adopt an ordinance in, um, I believe it says 2024 in the plan, and which is what is in the county's plan, um, to require, have a new ordinance that requires electrification of any appliances that currently use natural gas when they are replaced. So that's water heaters, cooktops, ranges, dryers, and perhaps heating systems. Um, I've got this little caveat here as feasible. The, uh, the calculation that we've done does, actually doesn't even include heating systems because heating systems, at least at this point, can be very expensive to, um, to replace with those heat pumps. They're very efficient, but they can be expensive to replace and may not be economically feasible. So we're not, um, kind of assuming that at this point, although we'll see in a couple of years, you know, where the state of the technology is and the market is, whether that's a feasible thing to add at that point. And then also the hot water heat pumps, heat pumps that are used for hot, hot water heaters, can, need to be, cannot be installed inside a house. They have to be installed in like a garage. So we've made, we've adjusted our calculations for that as well. So those are kind of the two big cutting edge programs. But as I said, you know, there, at last count, about 33 cities have already, um, in California, adopted some kind of a, an ordinance like that. And they kind of range from banning natural gas infrastructure and hookups entirely to allowing some kind of natural gas use, like, um, for cook types, cooktops or fireplaces. Because those are generally the things that people have the hardest, um, time letting go of. Uh, in Saratoga did something interesting where they allow cooktops and fireplaces to use natural gas, but they require a, um, an electrical outlet at that same point. So that in the future, those appliances could easily be switched out to electric versions. Uh, moving on to the energy efficiency sector, um, this chapter, section here, it talks about working with PG&E and MCE to continue to promote programs, rebates, energy audits, financing alternatives, et cetera, so that we continue to reduce our energy consumption. We've been reducing energy in Larkspur, energy use about 1% per year. That's for electricity as well as natural gas. So we're assuming that we can continue that track record. And then there are other programs. Um, one is to consider requiring energy efficiency audits at time of sale for real estate of homes. Another to, um, use high albedo surfaces, that those are surfaces that are highly reflective and don't absorb heat and to use those for roadways and parking lots. A program for the city to upgrade its streetlights to LED technology. That, that would reduce electricity use by about half. And, um, another program to complete energy efficiency projects at city facilities, also to implement conservation practices. In the waste reduction section, um, there are, uh, a couple of very important state laws right now about diverting, um, organic material, organic material from, sorry, from the landfill. And, uh, with a goal for the state to divert 75% of organic material by 2025. It's also a state law to, that requires businesses to at least have organic waste recycling service. And then the state law through the Green Building Code also requires 65% of construction and demolition waste to be diverted. So the state is already, um, kind of sitting the table. So the things that the city can do, first of all, is to work with the city's waste hauler, increase recycling and composting rates, also to address the Senate Bill 1383 requirements. The city can adopt an ordinance requiring use of recycling and organic waste collection services and also implementing penalties, um, if those, uh, services are not used adequately. This is actually something that's going to be required through, um, SB 1383. And then finally to, through your franchise agreement with the waste hauler, to consider investing in new solid waste processing infrastructure to remove recoverable materials. It's kind of a, a last, um, you know, the last thing, the last resort item on the list. If we can't do it voluntarily and through other, other means to get people to properly, sort their, their waste and, and compost their organic material. And then in the water conservation section, we note that water consumption has been declining. It's actually down 23% since 2005. This is through the entire MMWD, um, district. Dropping at approximately 2% per year. And the energy that's used in, for water is, um, mostly greenhouse gas free. So MMWD uses a lot of electricity, but they purchase deep green electricity from MCE. Also, Sonoma County Water Agency, which provides approximately 20% of the water that goes to MMWD. They also use carbon-free electricity. So emissions from treatment and delivery of water, are down 97% since 2005. So there's really no more emissions to get out of this sector. Nonetheless, we have programs in the plan to continue to reduce water consumption at this, at the current rate of 1% per year. And that's really important, especially as we'll probably be having, um, longer and more frequent droughts as, um, climate change continues to warm the planet. There are some other sections. I'm trying to be brief here, so I won't go into them. But there's a section on carbon sequestration, climate change adaptation. These are, you know, that's a pretty high level, um, uh, section. One on community engagement, because it is really important. We know, you know, that only 1% of the emissions, of course, comes from the city operation. So a lot of this is about motivating the community to take action in there and change their own behavior. And then a section on, um, implementing the Climate Action Plan and, and monitoring it to make sure that it is effective. So, um, to sum up, if the cap is fully implemented, it will reduce emissions 40% below 1990 levels by 2030. That's consistent with Senate Bill 32. It's also consistent with the Air Resources Board's, um, scoping plan that they, um, produced in 2017. They have guidance there for local governments. It's kind of a technical thing that's based on, um, emissions per, per capita. And the plan does achieve those, um, that metric as well. So. So that's the end of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Christine. Any questions from the council? On this presentation? And I'm seeing Catherine's got her hand up.
I thank you for that presentation. It's a lot of material that I still have yet to delve too deep, deeper into. But my question is actually towards Neil. Um, can you outline what the process is that we'll be going through? Now that this is the presentation and it's on a public, um, it's on our website for public comment. Can you outline what the process is for accepting public comment and implementing that into the plan possibly?
Well, our, our plan is to be, is to accept, uh, and take in public comment. We're, we're introducing the, the Climate Action Plan tonight. And I think depending upon the, uh, veracity of that, we're going to do more outreach, to the public through the newsflash and so on, from, from this, uh, kind of conduct more outreach. And, um, really gauge the extent of public comment. We've gotten some, uh, valuable comments, uh, tonight. And then the plan was to come back to the city council and conduct a, a review with, uh, council public comment as well. And look at any modifications or just adjustments, uh, that need to be done or ought to be done with direction from the city council.
Okay. I just, I, this three-page memo that, that, um, members of the community sent in today. I thought I haven't had a great amount of time to dig into it. But I think a lot of their comments are very relevant for how we might want to proceed to add, um, some more material to our plan. So I know that came in this morning, um, but, um, I'm glad that we're going to be able to have a chance to really de, dig a little deeper into some of these suggestions.
Yeah. And I, and then, and, and I think some of those comments that we've received today have actually been in the works for a little bit of time. And, um, I think we'll be, uh, wanting to, to look at them very carefully and seriously and so see what we can do to accommodate, um, some of the views that are expressed there.
Great. Thanks.
Uh, anyone else from the council? I see Scott. You got him, you.
Uh, there we go. Uh, Christine, thank you. Great presentation. My question for you is, uh, I'm curious with COVID, uh, if, uh, there are any statistics about how that has affected, um, commuting. Uh, I know, uh, your program said 48% is vehicles. I know people are driving a lot less. Do we have any statistics on that? Is it too early? Any projections of whether, uh, those patterns are going to continue once COVID is over and people are adapting to a new, uh, new world? Uh, I'm curious what your thoughts are on that.
Yeah, it's such a great question and such a, a time, you know, one of really importance right now. Uh, I was actually talking to a transportation consultant about this just recently. You know, traffic volumes have been way down, you know, 40%, 50%, depending on the community, um, sometimes even 70%. We're seeing, of course, now the roads are becoming a little bit more congested with schools, traffic, schools starting up again here in Marin County. So it's hard to know how that's going to, you know, in the long run, impact VMT projections. Uh, one of the things is that, you know, there's a lot of studies that are showing or predicting that people will be, there'll be a lot more remote working than, you know, going forward, that people are just accustomed to it, managers are realizing that it, it can work. And, uh, some studies are showing 25 to 30% of jobs will actually be done remotely in the, in going forward. So, you know, it's all in flux. It's, we don't have projections. And I think it's too early to kind of make those projections. We use our VMT projections are given, um, essentially they're, they're provided to us by the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. And so I assume, and they do revise these, um, every couple of years or more or less. So I'm assuming that as this all kind of shakes through, shakes out post-pandemic and we'll have a better handle on exactly what impact, long-lasting impact that's going to have, that those projections will be updated accordingly.
Christine, I'm sorry, and I have a follow-up question. It's, it's a little random, but, uh, you just triggered something, uh, when you, when you mentioned that. I, I, I grew up, uh, on the East Coast and most kids went to school in a school bus. Uh, here, for whatever reason, most kids go to school, you know, by car. You know, which as you mentioned, uh, it has a, a tremendous impact on, uh, pollution, traffic, all the things that you mentioned. Uh, are there any studies or recommendations, you know, that, that go into that and the effect that that actually has on the environment?
Um, well, I mean, of course, you know, that, boy, is that a big question. So, uh, certainly buses, when buses are full, they are much, uh, they have let, many fewer greenhouse gas emissions. They have to be, you know, they have to have a lot of ride, not a lot of riders, but they have to be reasonably, um, utilized in order to realize that. And, and so, so yellow school buses, like I grew up on the East Coast like you, and absolutely they were full and everybody took a bus and it was, um, it was kind of a great way to do it. There are, you know, they did a, they have a yellow school bus program that's been running now for a few years in Tiburon and Belvedere, and it's been quite successful. And so there are, you know, other models out there and statistics that could be, um, data that could be had in order to kind of project emissions reductions from a similar program in, um, in Larkspur, other communities. Yeah, but it, a lot of it kind of, it does depend on the rate of utilization of that, of that bus.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Scott?
No, that was, that was perfect. Thank you.
Okay, great. Uh, I see our vice mayor has his hand up.
Just a, a thank you, Christine, for, uh, keeping the, the kind of team necessary together in the county of all the participants in the, uh, action plan. And also to thank you for, uh, simplifying the presentation to actionable items. I, I can't get that pie chart out of my head that shows how much, uh, uh, we can do to reduce automobile emissions and also impact by how, uh, just changing, uh, something about the, our, the way we use energy in our homes. I, I think that's just fantastic. Two big bites we can take out of this. And, uh, I look forward to helping out.
Great. Anything else from the council? Catherine, are you raising your hand again? I didn't, no. Okay. So, uh, with that, uh, is there, I think we do have some public, uh, uh, comment. In the wings, Allison?
Yeah. Our first public comment will come from David M.
Uh, well, good evening, Mayor Harof. Count.
We've got a bad, we've got a bad Wi-Fi connection here.
I live here in Larkspur and I'm the informal Larkspur Climate Group and, uh.
You know, I think that there's a delayed connection there with David M., so I needed him for a moment. Um, I'm going to move on to our next, our next commenter and we will return back in a moment. Uh, Kevin Carroll, you may provide public comment.
Thank you. Um, for Councilmember Tindell, I can tell you, 30 years ago, I was on a school board. And it used to be up until then, uh, school buses were paid for by the state, but under Pete Wilson, boy, that's a name I haven't thought of in a long time. Uh, and then Gray Davis, those funds were cut. And so for most school districts that came down, do you want to cut your arts and PE program or school buses? And so in San Rafael, both the elementary and high school districts, we cut our buses, um, to a bare minimum. There is still some bus service, but they have their own budget problems. And the, the efforts going on in Tiburon are paid for by the parents in the city, not by the school district. So knowing your budget, I don't think you want to get into that business and knowing the cost. The other thing is a year ago, we passed, uh, you guys passed an ordinance about gasoline generators. And it was, uh, at the time, there was a recommendation to use natural gas, which it struck me as odd at the time. I have a real problem with natural gas and, um, I would prefer the city, uh, recommended, uh, battery packs or, uh, there's now even more portable, more portable battery packs. But if the city could reduce its, uh, inspection fees or, um, whatever fees are charged for installing batteries over gasoline or natural gas, I think that would be the way to go. If in the future you do want to educate the public away from natural gas, your best bet is any video from the 1989 Loma Prieta earthquake of the Marina District. I remember it very clearly because my ex-wife and I were at the ballpark. We were coming across the Golden Gate Bridge. This is before cell phones, scared to death what was going on with our kids over here in Marin. And my ex-wife never swore, but she started swearing a blue streak as we crossed the bridge. And I didn't understand it till we got to the Waldo grade and I looked in my rearview mirror and saw three towers of flame from the broken natural gas mains and saw the devastation that it did to that, uh, neighborhood, including almost killing my accountant at the time, uh, who's almost burned to death in her apartment house from a, a gas main break. So, uh, very powerful video you might use in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Anyone else in the public?
We do. Yes. I'm going to return to David M., um, to see if the sound quality has improved.
Okay.
Uh, well, hello, Mayor Harof. Uh, can you hear me?
Yeah, no, it's much better. Yes.
Oh, good, good.
Oh, good, good. Well, and all other council members as well. I'm David Mahler. I live here in Larkspur and I'm part of the informal Larkspur Climate Group. First of all, we really appreciate the opportunity to review this draft of the updated cap. And overall, we think it looks quite good. I particularly agree with some of Christine's comments that it seems to have taken the best from all the other caps we've taken a look at and does a great job on that. We do have some comments, and as has been mentioned, we submitted these by email this morning. I hope you all take a close look at those. Our comments really fell into three categories. The first one, and probably the most important, is really to focus on more community engagement and completing the cap. You know, the cap repeatedly makes the argument that most of the reductions going forward are going to have to come from the actions of individual residents. And unless the residents are engaged in developing the cap, we don't think there's going to be the buy-in to actually do that. So we really think that completing the cap is the time to do that and something much more holistic than just a comment and response type process. Secondly, there were a number of topics that we think should be addressed in the draft, and we provided a list of those. And then thirdly, there were a number of specific provisions that we had comments on, and I want to take just a minute to focus on two of those. And I was really struck, you know, the pie chart came up again about the major contributions to greenhouse gas emissions from the transportation sector and from burning gas in our buildings. And the cap is expecting to get forty five percent of the greenhouse emissions reductions to twenty thirty from low carbon transportation and another twenty three percent from renewable energy and electrification. So it's pretty clear in the cap, and from my experience, the transportation choice is primarily a behavior change issue. And it's another example of the critical need to engage Larkspur residents in this action. As far as reduction of gas use in buildings through electrification, we want to really encourage Larkspur to adopt an all electric ordinance. And this would be for new buildings and then a replace on burnout ordinance for existing buildings. Christine mentioned these, but the cap doesn't really say move ahead on that now. It talks about that the state's going to have some updates. But we think these ordinances need to be adopted now, not wait until the state acts in twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-six. And this is really to avoid making the problem worse while waiting for the state's updates on the building code. And particularly in light of pressure from the regional housing needs allocation for potentially hundreds of new dwelling units right here in Larkspur. We really think the cap should make a strong case for these ordinances and, and moving ahead on them. So just in summary, we really look forward to working with the council and staff and with Christine to complete the cap update and to help mitigate these, these extreme effects from our climate crisis. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, David. And I, I looked at your submittal earlier today and it was very thoughtful. And I really appreciate the work that went into it. And I am confident we will take your suggestions very seriously and moving forward. So thank you so much for that. Allison, anyone else?
Our next comment. Yep, our next comment will come from Al Grummet.
Okay, Al.
Good evening, members of the city council. Thanks so much for your time this evening. Also want to thank Christina Rourke. She does an amazing job with MCEP. Always very thorough, and I think her gift to you today is a, is a very thorough baseline of a climate action plan update. And I think the opportunity for you is, is to enrich that plan with, with Larkspur specific initiatives. And it's also your opportunity to be creative and bold in, in how you approach accomplishing the objectives of the plan. And, and in terms of that, I would start with just saying that the, the reduction targets in the climate action plan, you know, unfortunately, they may not be aggressive enough for what science and prudent risk management requires. So when you look at, at recent climate action plans, I think San Rafael was mentioned. In addition, the county, and I think Fairfax is in short order going to adopt their climate action plan. The county and Fairfax have been significantly more aggressive. They're on a faster track to net zero than state targets require. And, and that's what the latest climate science tells us we should be doing. I think unfortunately, climate science is telling us that we're underestimating the impacts of climate change. Even if we get to net zero emissions tomorrow, we've already locked in thirty years of warming. And I think we've all witnessed recently the instability that the warming has produced, both locally and globally. So I think from, I, I come from a background of, of financial risk management. I think that any prudent risk manager is going to want to err on the side of, of lower emissions when, when faced with the tremendous costs and uncertainties associated with the destabilizing effect of climate change. The good news is, I think the secret weapon that the council has to enrich the climate action plan is, is the community involvement that was referenced earlier. I think the, the climate action plan update would benefit greatly from community input, especially in uncovering Larkspur specific opportunities to reduce greenhouse gases in ways that, that also have co-benefits like boosting the local economy and, and providing health benefits. A couple of quick examples of that for, under your waste reduction measures, you, you have WR dash C six, which encourages product delivery services to reduce packaging waste. I think that that can be more detailed and, and more actionable. Specifically, the county is considering, was considering prior to the pandemic, disposable foodware ordinance. I think you, the adoption of that in, in lockstep with the county would be a great commitment to make in the cap. And, and then focusing on the potential to promote reusable foodware could have tremendous co-benefits to local restaurants that have been hit hard during the pandemic. And just to give you a local example, Comforts in Santa Anselmo, they voluntarily switched from disposable foodware to reusables for onsite dining and, and they're saving on an annual basis fourteen thousand dollars, which is a huge savings for a small business like a restaurant. Similarly, there are opportunities to survey members of the community who are going to provide you with incredibly valuable insights into what is possible. So I reached out very quickly just to the Marin County Bicycle Coalition and asked them what they would propose to your city council if invited to provide input. And they provided a great list of items, and I'll just share two of them just to give you a sense.
And if we could, if we could get that done pretty quickly here, Al, because we're, we're running long on time.
Yeah, absolutely. So I think the idea is, is visualizing a future where, where you make bike transportation a viable alternative to cars would go a long way to chipping away at that, that transportation number. And, and some of the specific recommendations are to, to work with TAM on the Larkspur north-south Greenway Gap closure and encourage bike parking at, at Golden Gate, at the, at the Larkspur Landing. So thanks for your time and appreciate you taking the time to hear our input.
Thanks. Thanks for your comments. And I really personally, this is Kevin, I take these comments very much to heart and look forward to working with Neil and seeing what we could do to make sure they are responsibly addressed within our, their planning documents. Is anyone else from the, the public? Allison?
Our next comment will come from Ken Jones.
Okay, Ken. And I should be asking, you know, where, where you live, Ken. Should have asked that before.
Ken Jones, and I live in the part of Greenbraid that is part of Larkspur.
Good. So do I.
Thank you, Christine. It's a great presentation, and there's a lot of great ideas and ideas to, to work on and have a real plan for in, in the climate action plan. I just want to mention, I'm so proud to be a part of Larkspur. I think Larkspur was the first municipality in Marin to sign on to the we're still in document when the previous person that occupied the office of president took us out of the Paris Climate Accords. That was wonderful. And there's so much to do here as a community where cities and county work together in a kind of synergy. I think there is a sense, you know, with what's happened with the Paris Climate Accords that they're leaving it up to California and maybe Marin County and perhaps even Larkspur to make up for their failures to to meet their goals that they aren't quite meeting in those Paris Climate Accords. And so it behooves us to every decision, every plan that we start to think about as a city, you ask yourself the question, how will this affect our emissions? And is there a way to do something with fewer emissions? When I saw so much perfectly good cement curbs or sidewalks being taken out to what looked like a small change, was there anyone thinking about how much cement costs in emissions or if it was made in Petaluma? Perhaps that was a consumption based admission because it came from somewhere else. I think that that brings up the issue that I like to bring up in a lot of the climate action plans in Marin is, is the issue of consumption based emissions because you really want to focus on what gives the biggest bang for the buck. And, and since it points out that the emissions in Larkspur are at least four times greater consumption based emission or four times greater than the ones in the community based. It seems like that needs to have something in it that says that we're really going to focus on that, or at least we're going to try to come up with a way to do that. There are ways to measure consumption based emissions for each city. There was a group Cool Climate based in UC Berkeley that was working on that with Bay Area Air Quality Management District and a group in San Francisco that grew out of that Eco Data Labs that can do the, the city measurement for that and even suggest policies that cities can do to deal with those kind of emissions. And then one last thing I just want to say is that each decision, I think you really need to consider social equity in each action we take towards our climate goals. You know, an example might be something like when we're working and focusing on EVs, which are important or EV charging stations that you have to look at, okay, what public transportation might be better to help more people who don't have the money to afford EVs? Or some balance there, you know? It is something to think about all the time.
Good. Thank, thank you, Ken. I appreciate that very much for your comments. Allison, do we have anyone else?
Our next comment will come from Carleen Cullen.
Okay, and I'm, I'm gonna keep things to three minutes, so please, Carleen, go ahead and let, let us know where you live.
Okay, sure. Thank you and good evening. Thanks for having me. So Carleen Cullen, I live in Greenbraid and I started a nonprofit called Cool the Earth fifteen years ago, which focused on personal action and behavior change to reduce carbon emissions. Our programs run in K through five schools and it's a school to home program. So we run in the elementary schools in Larkspur and actually through almost every school in the county. And it's all about educating kids and then teaching them how to teach their parents about how to take action. About a year and a half ago, we launched a pilot campaign called Drive Clean Bay Area. And I wanted to talk a little bit about that. The reason we added this additional really major program was as vehicle costs were, were dropping, more models were coming on the market, range was increasing. There's obviously a, an opportunity to really reduce carbon emissions. And one of the things that's been well documented from the California Air Resources Board to private consulting firms is that consumer perceptions have not kept pace with the advancements in the technology in the EV sector. And it's really a very significant issue. One of the things that we and our communities can, can really address. So we've, we focus on people who are living in single family homes. We also track very closely significant developments in multi-unit. There's two startup companies, one that is founded by the two founders of Tesla that have a inexpensive product that's coming to market. We've taken a look at it that can help people in multi-unit be able to charge at home. And we also do work in low income communities. We offer bilingual financial workshops for people who are interested in taking advantage of some of the state incentives. So there's a lot to talk about, about what we can do with EVs. I think the one thing I want to mention is we're hosting a Bay Area wide Drive Electric Earth Day on April twenty fourth and four PM open to the public. We'd love to work with you all to help get that free event out to Larkspur constituents. And, you know, I think community, the way we really affect change at the grassroots level is so important with community buy-in, community communications, et cetera. So we would definitely be interested in, in continuing that conversation. And I want to address a question that I think one of the council members had about the global, the emissions reduction during the pandemic. And globally, there was about a nine percent reduction in carbon emissions and nineteen percent drop in transportation. But we've seen now as the pandemic starts to ease, that with economic activity increasing, they haven't come back full swing, but it's definitely much more correlated to where, where we used to be. So there's some drop, but it's, it's coming back, unfortunately.
Something we need to pay attention to. Thanks very much, Carleen. Appreciate it. Okay, anybody else from the public?
Our next comment will come from Kelly Jones.
Okay, and again, let's try to keep things done under three minutes. Kelly, can you let us know where you live?
And Kelly, if you can unmute yourself on your end so the council can hear you.
Okay, dope. Yeah. Good evening, council members. Yes, I, I'm Kelly Jones. I live in Larkspur. And I also work with three fifty Marin, although I'm not representing them here. I'm just speaking as a Larkspur citizen. I'm just really enthused that you're digging into this process, which, you know, of course is so important. And I realize it's, it's early on. And I just wanted to make one brief point, and that's to underline something that Al Grummet mentioned earlier on that, you know, as, as I know, and probably many of you know, from your readings of articles on the science, the science is telling us more and more that this is much more urgent than originally thought. And so I just want to encourage the council as they consider the options going forward to really give careful consideration to following the lead of the county and of Fairfax and setting more aggressive goals than the state has set. And I just think that it's so important because we're already seeing this disruption from climate, as you already know. I mean, I think we all were astounded by what happened when PG&E shut down the power in the past couple of years. These disruptions are already happening, as we well know. We're seeing it in Texas. We're seeing it in the Houston unprecedented floods, you know, I, I could run through the list, but it's difficult to take action on these things when there's public opposition because it affects commerce. But in, as we saw with the fires and the shut offs, it's affecting commerce now. These things are starting to affect our economy and it's just going to take really smart and foreplanning years in advance to avoid some of the real disruptions to come. So again, that's my main point is just really give careful consideration to taking more aggressive action as you work through this process.
Great. Thank, thank you, Kelly. Appreciate that. Anyone else in the public? Allison?
Our next comment will come from Leslie Alden.
Okay, Leslie.
And you're
Council and Mayor and Vice Mayor and all of you and Christine, it's good to see all of you. I, I think I know most of you. I'm Leslie Alden. I don't live in Larkspur, but I'm a neighbor. I live right over the border in Corder Madera. And I just got off a meeting of our Corder Madera Climate Action Committee, which is a subcommittee of a larger committee, and we are, you know, really working on community outreach. I want to concur with just about everything that everyone, all the speakers before me have said, so I won't be labor that. But the community engagement piece is extremely important to, to get the community really buying into pursuing the solutions at speed and scale. Christine has just done such a great job for many years in the county. And, and yet, as much as we like to think of ourselves as leaders here in Marin, we have to be much more aggressive, as, as several of the speakers have already said. I would encourage Larkspur to join Corder Madera and the county and go as far beyond as we can possibly go. It'd be as aggressive as possible, sort of reach codes before we have to put in the next round of reach codes. We need to beat the Title 24 work revisions that are coming from the state and just be as bold as possible. We don't have time to waste. It would be marvelous to have a campaign that included all jurisdictions. It was like fossil free by 33 or something like that, that we could really get the community engaged in. So I applaud all of you. I encourage you to be as bold as possible and really lead on this and encourage your colleagues around the county to join you in a real countywide effort. So thank you for all you're doing, but really bring in the community. Because as you know, people only show up if they're mad at you. So reaching out to them and engaging them before they say, you never told us this. It would be a great way to really rally everyone to this effort. So thank you all for your work.
Okay, thank you, Leslie. I think we're hearing a strong message here tonight and I will take it to heart. Allison, anybody else in the public?
Looking for any further raised hands or emailed public comment. And there is no further public comment.
Okay, all right. Well, again, Christine, thank you so much for your your presentation and leading this conversation. This is near and dear to my own heart, since I'm very involved in MCE Clean Energy, which I'll mention here in a few minutes. And leadership on climate action is something that I think we all want to pursue. And I see Scott raising his hand.
Yeah, please. For Christine, before you go, I just have a question and I don't know if this question is to you or to anybody else on our staff that might know. It was suggested as far as having the 100% electric homes and requiring that by a certain date. My question is, is there any downside to that economically? You know, whether it's for the developer or I I'm trying to think of what the pushback would be on the other side. Why someone would say, no, we shouldn't do that. From your experience or Neil or anybody else who has an opinion on this, what is the the negative to requiring new homes to be all electric?
And so my understanding, and I haven't actually done this myself, so is that heat pump heaters, heating systems are more expensive. But when you're doing a new house, if you don't bring any, you know, if it's a brand new house and you don't and you're not bringing the natural gas pipe to your house, you actually, and you're not creating a connection, that actually saves quite a bit of money. So that kind of offsets the additional cost of the heat pump heating system. And the water heaters are also more expensive. But I do know people who have done it and, you know, I think if you're, again, if you're building a house, it's a lot less prohibitive than if you're if you're retrofitting one.
Yeah, and I think that I think the conversation about ordinances really focuses on new construction as opposed to retrofits, so.
It does. And if I could just clarify too, because a couple of the people made some comments about the programs in it are actually reach codes. So we don't know when the when the state will be bringing forward building codes that require all electric buildings. So the programs that are in the climate action plan are are reach codes to to, you know, to do it at the time it with the building cycles, but not necessarily to wait for the state to take action first. And then one other comment I wanted to make too, because there were some comments about how the county's goal was more aggressive than what we what we proposed in the climate action plan. And actually, the county's goal is the same to mitigate emissions 40% below 1990 levels. The additional reduction is through sequestration, and that is to sequester carbons, sequester emissions through their carbon farms, plant, carbon farm plants that would happen in the agricultural sector. So it's not exactly an apples.
Yeah, it's not apples, right? No.
Yeah, I just wanted to make that clear.
Exactly. The county has ag, an ag sector which we which we don't have.
Exactly.
Okay, any other questions for Christine or comments? And I see our Vice Mayor raising his hand.
Just to follow up on Scott's question, and I think Neil could, maybe not tonight, but in the future, when we get back to discussing implementation. I think the issue surrounding changeover, first of all, I want to say I support everything that Christine has laid out. I think it's really important. But the education part of this may be more complex than it might look to some on the surface. I think there's some preferences with respect to quality of life and things, cooking choices, et cetera. We should allow some public communication, education, outreach dialogue to make sure everybody's on board with the choices that are in front of us and how important it is to think about priorities when we make these decisions. So I just, I think Scott made a good, asked a very important question, but there's there are, I think, more details to it that we will face in the future that need proper definition and more team building with our community.
Yep, I agree with that completely. And we'll work on it, but this is this is a, this is a, this is a good start. So again, unless there are other comments from the council, I just want to say again, thank you, Christine, for moving us along. And Neil, we've got a lot of work to do. And we'll and we'll do it. Okay, anything else on this item? And again, so thank you very much, Christine. Appreciate very much your presentation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
So let's move on to agenda item number four, which is approval of the consent calendar. And I'll ask first if there's anyone on the council that would like to remove any item for separate discussion that's currently on the consent calendar. I'm not seeing anybody nodding their heads. Allison, is there anyone in the public who would like to request separate consideration of a consent calendar item?
I'm looking for any raised hands or emailed comments, and there is no public comment.
Okay, well, I guess if that's where we are, I'll ask for a motion to approve it.
Motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, Allison, you want to do the roll call?
Councilmember Cando?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson?
I don't, I don't think he's on.
Okay. Councilmember Way?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Homer?
Yes.
Mayor Haroff?
Yes.
And I'll loop back to Councilmember Paulson, who I believe is available now.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, I vote yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I hope you're driving safely. Listening to us. Okay, so the consent calendar is approved. We'll move on to agenda item number five, which is our city manager's oral report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, two items I wanted to update council on. First is that we have an announcement that your assistant to the city manager, Shannon Harris, put out. One is it's a resilient neighborhood CPR for the planet program. And you can, it's either timely in light of the item we just had. But it's a five session workshop that you can sign up for to learn more about how you can reduce your carbon footprint and get prepared for emergencies like wildfires and power outages. And there is information on the city's homepage. The workshops begin on March 25th and at 4:00 to 6:00. There's also one on March 31st, 30 to 8:30. So go to our website to learn more about that. And then I also just want to remind the council members in the public that there is a link in the news section of our homepage to a survey that the Transportation Authority of Marin is conducting about potential bike sharing program. And we really encourage folks to follow that link, participate in the survey and give some input to Tam on on what you think of the proposed program. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, great. Any any questions for our city manager? Not seeing any. So thank you for that. And I think we'll just turn to council members' oral reports and comments. Does anyone on the council have anything they want to bring up this evening? And I'm sure you do. But I'm not seeing any hands.
I brought my things up during the wildfire presentation.
Okay, anyone else? I've got a couple of things I just want to mention briefly. First, there's still an ongoing conversation about the renaming of Sir Francis Drake. I participated in those conversations with county staff and members of the Board of Supervisors. The Board of Supervisors did have a vote last week, which I think was fairly consistent with the vote that the city of Larkspur took in terms of endorsing, at least in principle, a dual naming strategy. There are some legal issues associated with that, mostly, I think, having to do with how the US Postal Service will respond to that. So there's still going to be some additional conversations on that subject. And we may need to bring it back to the city council at some point. But those conversations are going forward and I expect it to continue. Also related to Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, many of you may have noticed there's a lot of construction going on on Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. And although that construction is all within the incorporated Marin County jurisdiction, it really directly impacts us. A lot of that has been kind of planned through the work that has been done before. But I think one of the things that's been a little startling to people are the installation of new lighting facilities, including lighting facilities on the median strip in front of On Air Shopping Center and some very large traffic light systems that have been installed at the entrance to the Greenbree neighborhood on La Cuesta and Licio, which just seemed to have appeared in the last 24 hours. So there's a, again, a conversation that is going on about how that happened and whether something can be done to maybe make adjustments to some decisions that have been made about the installation of those facilities. Talked a little bit earlier today about the Chamber of Commerce, had a very productive conversation with the Chamber today. Much to my delight, because I've been on the Chamber now for about a year or so. It's doing fine. We keep increasing membership in the Chamber, bringing in folks from throughout Larkspur as well as in some of our areas of influence and in Kenfield in particular. So I think we now have the College of Marin that is going to join the Chamber. We're working with the hospital. And finances are good. So the Chamber very much appreciates the support that the city has provided over time. I think our TOT resources should be going up because apparently the merit's doing just fine. So very, very happy to hear that report from from them. And then finally, one, since we had a little conversation about climate change, as you all know, I'm the city's representative on the MCE board. And I'm very glad to have been elected to chair the Board's Executive Committee going forward into the into the future, which is a very nice honor, which I'm very grateful to have. The finances for MCE remain strong. It was a challenging year for 2020, but we're still in good shape. And most importantly, MCE continues to be recognized within the finance community as a strong and resilient entity. It just received a rating from Standard and Poor's, which is unheard of within the community choice aggregation community throughout the state of California. So having these terrific ratings really are not only a reflection of the strength of the entities finances, but will create opportunities for investments going forward into the future that will help us to continue to accomplish the state's renewable energy goals. So that's it. That's my report. And since I think I was last, we'll then move on to agenda item number seven, which is public hearings. There are none. And so on to agenda number, item number eight, business items. And it's the start of our budget review process. So I think we'll turn it over, I think, to Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, I'm gonna call up a PowerPoint if you're patient with me for a minute. I will get this up and then up on the screen.
There it is.
Yeah, but I want to share that one. Okay. All right, for one meeting only, I changed the color of the slides from our typical blue that we use for a little green here for for St. Patrick's Day, so.
The green looks good. I like that.
This is unusual. We don't normally bring you a midyear budget discussion this late because we're actually running up against the start of our budget discussion for next fiscal year. But as we've been signaling to the council, more so than in a typical year, we really felt we needed to see what the sales tax returns from the holiday season were before we could propose any midyear budget adjustments to you. This is an abridged version of a presentation that I did for the council during your strategic planning session, which is up on our video archive that you can reach through our website. So folks who want to see all of the information can go there. And this is a little more streamlined, a little more geared toward the recommendations in the staff report. I want to start by just giving you a quick overview of where our revenues are. And I should note that administrators, I think Administrative Services Director Kathy Orm, who really is the person that does all the work with respect to the budget is here and ready to help me when the questions come up. So we typically expect to have about 55% of our property tax after the December collection occurs. For December, we budgeted that we would see 10.6 million in property tax. And we actually saw 6 million come in in through January. So we're definitely on track to see the 10.6 million budget target realized, maybe a tiny bit more than that, but that's a number we're really pleased about. So we're trending just slightly ahead of our budget. Sales tax is the one we've been very concerned about. We've been making a lot of our decisions this year in terms of what we were, and we're not certain what happened with sales tax. You'll recall, we dramatically cut our estimate for sales tax in the wake of the pandemic. And so we assumed 1.6 million or so would be what we'd see this year. And I told you, I hoped very much to be wrong about that. Our actual through January, and that was our number that goes with a two month lag. So that doesn't include the holiday season, was roughly a million dollars. So we have been pleased to see we're pacing well ahead of our 1.6 million target. Kathy Orm and I had a chance to review the December returns. We incorporated them into the budget report that you have in front of you. I didn't have a chance to incorporate them in my slideshow, but you'll see that the December returns look on trend with everything else that we're seeing. And so we're pleased to say we were wrong. Sales tax is doing better than we thought it would do. So one of the questions is why is that happening? And the biggest reason is that internet sales are offsetting the losses that we're experiencing at brick and mortar locations. I actually think the more I look at our model and the more I look at the information we're getting from our sales tax consultant, HDL, I think our prediction for what would happen with our brick and mortar locations, that means our cash registers here in Larkspur, I think we were probably about right, but what we couldn't comprehend at the time was the volume of sales tax we had realized from Comprehend at the time was the volume of sales tax we had realized from internet sales. And you know, there's two reasons for that. One is the just people shifting their behavior. The other thing is, as we've talked about in a number of other meetings. The. Decision to in the federal court to require. Internet sales portals to charge sales tax for states and localities. Municipalities commonly referred as a Wayfair decision has really boosted those revenues coming in. One thing that we do have, want to note that we have some caution about is the state's current methodology for doing sales tax. Has what be called a true-up period that occurs in May and June. The true-up means that throughout the year, the state sends us sales tax, and it's a mixture of actual receipts. And projected receipts. And it's those projected receipts that have to be corrected on a rolling basis. And the big true-up occurs at the end of the fiscal year in May and June. And so last year, as I told the council before. For the first time in our history, we had a negative true-up, meaning that the state had advanced us more money than we actually were realizing. Actual receipts. And so in May of 2020, we actually received no sales tax. Because of the true-up calculation. So we keep monitoring and preparing for that, but even with that concern. We feel confident now in projecting that our sales tax revenue will exceed our 1.62. Budget projection and seems on track to exceed to $2 million. It may even go as high as 2.3, 2.4 million if current trend continues. So what is the bottom line? Pre-pandemic, we were starting to approach $3 million in sales tax. And in talking with our sales tax consultant. We now think that probably the safe number to budget for for the next few years is closer to 2.4 million. So what this means is we're doing a lot better than Kathy and I thought we were going to do, and we're really pleased about that. But it also means we're doing well against a very flashed budget, and we are still hurting. From what we were enjoying pre-pandemic. So. That's a mixed message. We're here tonight to say we're doing better, but we're still not doing as well as we used to. It was nice to hear the mayor's telling me that transient occupancy tax is going to pick up because while it's been doing better than our. Forecast. It's still well below the numbers we were enjoying pre-pandemic. So we. Were pretty dire in our projections for the fiscal year. We added at 160,000. Through January, we'd actually collected 130,000. So we're well on track to exceed 160,000. In this budget year. But and then we're trending ahead of budget. Now that said. Pre-pandemic, we were enjoying over 900,000 in TOT revenue. So are we going to get back to that? We've talked to HDL, who actually does do some assessment of the. Tourism industry, and we use some of their information and some other information we were able to look at. And we think it'd be more reasonable and cautious to just sort of expect more like 400,000 to 500,000 as our TOT range. For a few years while the industry recovers. This is very similar to the numbers we saw in the recession. So we're sort of anticipating that, at least for the next few years, as folks get grow comfortable again with travel. This is probably a better budget number for us, and if the hotel exceeds it, that would be fantastic.
Sounds fine.
Just a reminder that historically, Larkspur takes 1% of our TOT, and we put it in a special fund that we call the TOT Fund. To support local businesses. So that's one of our primary means of doing economic development. And so that's something we'll talk about in a little bit. Fee revenue, another key area for us. Building fee revenue looks much stronger than expected. I do have a note in the. Staff report that we changed some methodology and how we take in and calculate. Fee revenue in terms of our general ledger. So we're doing a little bit of reconciliation right now, but I think we're actually. Trending in a way that the pandemic seems to have had very little effect on building fee revenue. People are still. Still working on their homes. They've changed the nature of their projects, but they are still investing in work on their homes. Planning fee revenue has slowed, although Neil Pop, your planning building director and I have met quite a bit. Over the last few weeks, and we're starting to see an upward trend there. So folks are now feeling comfortable, we think, in investing in. Those larger scale projects that need to go through the planning. Department. The good news is that because of cost recovery, we've managed to protect the city pretty well during this period. And public works, fee revenue continues to meet its cost recovery goal. You know, and just a reminder, a lot of public works, we've moved out of the general fund. We're able to charge a lot of our. Employees and their time and our costs and a material out to project. That's protected the general fund quite a bit. One area we're just decimated on, and we will continue to be decimated on, and we'll just absorb more subsidy. Is in recreation as we try to figure out how to bring recreation back online. Spent a lot of time with Community Services Director Franklin Escobedo and our Recreation Supervisor Nick Stone last week. Working on some plans to begin to to grow recreation back to where it was. But one of the key decisions we've made for this year is we will pretty much forego our a large number of our revenue streams in recreation. We will continue to do rental fees, but and rental fees with respect to facilities like the gym in the field. Those are longstanding fee relationships that we have with a lot of organized sports groups. But for example, we probably will just let folks use the picnic tables this year on a first come, first served basis. We. Won't really have the manpower, and we're not certain what the COVID rules will be around that particular amenity. So we think. It's best that we just not plan to see revenues in that area this year. As a side note, although we're focusing tonight, as we usually do in a lot of our discussions on the general fund. We do have one enterprise fund, which is our super cool summer school program, and. Mr. Stone is working really hard to figure out what sort of program that can look like this year. In light of COVID, but we would like to bring something back online. You'll recall, we had to cancel that program last year. So we're trying to try to figure that out now. Here's some key recommended adjustments that are in the staff report for the expenditure side of the equation. First is, I think because we're doing better. One of the things that's helped us get through so far this fiscal year is a series of actions we took to reduce pay by 10%. Across the board base pay for all employees. Some of the employees are subject to furloughs, and some of the employees are subject to pay reduction. I'd like you to approve resolutions tonight that would end those programs and reinstate folks to full employment. Beginning March 22nd. We have, I think, the financial capacity to do that now. And it'll help us bring our staff back fully online as we begin to accelerate the return of our services as the. COVID-19 situation subsides some. You already approved this, my request a few meetings ago, which is to hire one of the positions we were holding vacant, which is a library one position. And also to shift the library to an 80-hour pay period. We were operating previously at a 70-hour pay period. For the library staff. These additional hours and this additional person are going to help us meet. The demand that we already experienced, even with the library closed, the public and only offering curbside service. Demand has really surprised us for library services, and we are now working on our plan to offer limited access to the library. In the near future. The other thing I'm requesting is authorization to use some money to purchase vacation leave back from the employees. We give folks a bank of leave for them to use for vacation time. By law, that's a property right, so it's the liability for the city, and because of the pandemic, employees have not been able to utilize that. Leave at their normal rate, and so. Having a vacation, the buyback program helps us reduce that liability, and it also offers our employees an opportunity to put a little more money in their pocket. So I think that's a win-win, and I'd like authorization to do that as well. There are some potential expenditures that are not in the mid-year proposal, but we anticipate and have highlighted a little bit in staff report, and I just want to mention them. One is we're looking at community services and planning and building, and in both those departments. Probably will be coming to hire some positions. Planning and building actually had a recent resignation, so we have an authorized position that's vacant, and we're taking, as we always do, a look now to. Make sure that filling that position in the same way is the appropriate action at this time. And then the other thing, we continue to look at both the library and recreation divisions and community services. And as we bring those services back online, adapting and being able to offer those services is going to require. More people. So we'll likely be talking more with you through the budget season about hiring in those areas. And then, you know, what are reopening costs going to look like? We have been fortunate that a lot of our investment during COVID has been to be more digitally nimble. And that will have a long-term return on investment. But what are the genuine costs to safely reopen our facilities and return to interacting with the public? We have some sense of that. We've done some investment, but there's likely more investment to come. A couple of ifs I wanted to highlight. So the first one is. I mentioned this in the staff report. If revenue trends continue the way they are, I think we'll have the capacity to leave the. TOT fund reserves alone. The council in adopting its budget for this fiscal year. Authorized the transfer of most of the reserves from the TOT fund into the general fund. As a backfill against lost revenue, against lost TOT revenue. If we continue to see these trends in the. Sales tax revenue, then I think we may be able to avoid drawing upon the TOT fund, which will. Leave us that pot of money both as protection next year. And also it will restore some of our economic development capacity in fiscal year 22. So. Really hopeful that that will materialize. And then lastly, I thought it was appropriate to at least mention that the federal stimulus money appears to be on its way, although I know. A whole number of lawsuits are being threatened or filed, and there's a lot of confusion at the moment about what you can and can't do with this money. But. Your staff's already planning with the assumption it's going to arrive, and Ms. Orm and I are collecting as much information as we can. About what we are allowed and not allowed to do with the stimulus package so that. When we begin to see authorizations for that money, we're prepared to come to you with some some suggestions and some ideas. On how to use it. As we understand it now, there's two major categories to consider. One is you can qualify some of the money that. Has been allocated to your city to deal with shortfalls in your realized revenues. Or unrealized revenues. And then the other thing is that. There's a lot of emphasis on investing in infrastructure and CIP projects. So we'll be looking. With your Public Works Director Julian Skinner to figure out if some of the unfunded CIP projects are appropriate for the. Stimulus money. So more on that to come. Still in the early stages as we as we try to digest all of that. And that concludes my presentation. The staff report is available to you, and whoops. I am available for questions, as I believe is Kathy.
Great. Thank you, Dan. That's that's very helpful. I've got a question or two, but I want to open it up to the rest of the council before I ask. I don't see any hands up. Okay, I'm not, all right. I'm not seeing that partial portion of my screen. There you go. Let's take him in order. Catherine, go ahead.
Thanks, Dan, for that presentation. I think we've done an exceptional job in being nimble during this. Last one, 365 days, which is marked by yesterday. Do you have any ballpark figure what the federal stimulus dollar amount might be for our size city?
Well, it's not, it's an, that's not, let me start. Strangely enough, we are going to be slight winners in what I understand to be the allocation system because one of the key methodologies. Being employed ties to CDBG calculations, and I was told by an analyst that. And smaller entities that participate in pooled CDBG programs. Are likely to see slightly more money than cities of comparable size that don't participate in such programs. Larkspur does participate in such a program. We've been told to anticipate roughly 2.2 million in the last spreadsheet that I received. The actual amount, I think, will depend on how a few things shake out, so we'll update that. But I think it's reasonable to expect it to be over $2 million.
Okay, well, if it's tied to infrastructure, we sure have a lot of needs that way. So. It'll be interesting to see what we can decide to do with that.
Yeah, I think it's also been explained to me. What you first are asked to do is calculate the revenue loss you experience. And then you'll receive that as backfill, and that'll be unrestricted money. And then there's going to be a long list of. Things you can do with the balance, essentially restrictions, and that's where the infrastructure list becomes really important.
Okay, thanks.
I think I saw Dan Helmer's hand up.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Dan, could you, if you're comfortable doing this, just reflect. A bit on the experience and and the. Opportunity, I guess, that comes out of the challenge. Challenges we faced over the last year where we've had to adapt and adjust. To things pretty quickly, mostly in a. I guess, an acceleration to a digital. Operation. Could you talk a little, just. Just talk about whether you think the net result of this is a benefit or. How we've come through this and how you look forward.
But I have two sort of separate issues. Well, I'll go on the digital point, which is that I think. I've mentioned before, staff had developed right before the pandemic, a five-year plan to really move the city. Into the digital world because we were woefully behind in a lot of respects. I would say we've done 60% or so of that plan, and we have another 20% of it. Will be implemented by the end of the calendar year. So that's pretty remarkable to do your five-year plan in about a year and a half. And I think what's been transformative for us is the discovery that. When you digitize, you actually become better capable of engaging each member of the public the way they want to be engaged. Some people really want that quick digital touch. They don't really want to spend a lot of time with you, and other folks do. So what we've learned is we can be more responsive first to somebody who just wants a quick answer, or. Now we're hoping we're going to provide the resources online so they don't even need us. They can just get what they want. The hard part's bringing back the personal touch in a way that balances all of this, and I think that's what we're all going to try to discover together. As we sort of resume whatever the new normal is. Actually, when you first were asking a question, though, my conversation with Nick Stone and Franklin Escobedo last week. Came to mind because I realized that as estimated as community services have been in a lot of respects. It's so rare in government to wipe the slate clean and say, you know what, we can kind of almost start over. And to listen to two staff people. Brainstorm a little bit where they go, we don't have to do it the way we've been doing it for the last 20 years. Is really, it's something we don't get to do as often as I would like, and it's been. And it's been very eye-opening, really pleasant, and I can see a renewed enthusiasm that I think the public's going to enjoy as we come out of this.
Thank you very much.
And did you have anything else you wanted to ask?
No, I was just looking for Dan's perspective.
Yeah.
Coming through this, because I, I have, is for myself, witnessed many of the things he described, and I, I think it's a tribute to our management and staff, and I'm truly grateful.
Yeah, no, I endorse that completely. A year ago, I would not have expected us to be in as good a position as, as we are. So it's really a, a source of credit for, for Dan and our overall staff and management that we're doing as well as we are.
I do feel compelled to tell you though, since we're on this, I'm allowed to pulpit for a second. As much as Zoom has been fantastic, Kathy Orm and Neil Top two, I think, are both still listening. And I had, following all the protocols, and we were masked, but we had our longest in-person meeting in well over a year. And there is something tremendously productive about.
Yes.
Seeing somebody in person and having a long hash out in the same proximity to one another.
I, I'm not suggesting a substitute.
I just wanted to share that because it was just a reminder that that had its value too.
It, it, it absolutely, it absolutely does. And hopefully we're going to get back to that where that becomes more common again. And, and on that note, I, I will just take the opportunity to announce that I had my second vaccine dose today, so I will live forever. Anything else from, anything else from the, the council? I just had, I just had one question myself and it actually kind of tracks back to Catherine's question about the stimulus money. Because it came up in the Chamber of Commerce conversation earlier today, which is the extent to which, as those funds start to come in, to what extent will they be available for use in economic development? And I, I asked that question only because it was suggested during the discussion that some of our neighboring communities are already planning to use those monies for that purpose and supporting other Chamber of Commerce's. So I just don't know what the, what the restrictions might be on the use of those funds.
Well, at this time, the first thing I'd say is I urge caution before, I, I will tell you that I have been in at least a dozen conversations with my fellow managers about the stimulus money. And so I'm very aware of what they are and are not contemplating. And that's news to me that they're contemplating directing it to their chambers of commerce.
It was kind of surprising to me to hear that as well, which is why I'm asking the question, so.
We are having discussions about additional collaborative efforts in the economic development realm. But I also want to emphasize the stimulus package has its own pots of money for businesses and small businesses. And so it's important that we really decipher what the intent of Congress was when they passed this bill. And one of the reasons I have been talking only in generalities about what the city might do with it is we're just now getting our first briefings of what the legislative intent of Congress actually is. And so I guess I would say, what I would say for Larkspur is more exciting is that we were so cautious and we prepared ourselves so well last March to deal with what we're dealing with now, that we may still have some of our economic development money that we were otherwise going to have to spend on operations.
Right, and that's.
And I think that should be the better discussion to occur with the business community is, is the pots of money may still be there. Now, I do think that there's synergy between investing in infrastructure and economic development. And I think that might be the area that we should be focusing our attention is how can we invest in infrastructure in a way that is complementary to business? And I think that'll probably be one of the themes that I'll try to, to look at as we evaluate our options.
I think that, 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 that's very, that's very helpful. Cause I think there's a little bit of misinformation that's getting circulated around about what can be done with the stimulus money when it starts, starts coming in and what priorities communities may, may have. And speaking of the Chamber of Commerce, I think you, Dan, and I will be attending a, a program with them later. Maybe it's in May. I can't remember exactly what it is. Where we'll be talking to the business community. So this, that might be a great opportunity to kind of be responsive to some of those, those questions. Mr. Helmer.
I've been waiting 25 years to ask this question.
I haven't been here 25 years.
But I didn't realize it till tonight. Could such opportunities include collective parking strategies, Mr. City Manager?
Of course. I think the answer is definitely yes.
Thank you very much.
Is that it? Asked and answered.
For now, for now, yes.
He'll have another one in 25 more years.
No, no, 25 more minutes.
I won't, I won't be, I won't be around in 25 more years. So you gotta get it out now. Anything else from, from the council on this?
No, I'm ready to.
This is really.
Whoops.
Oops.
I'm ready to.
Guy, is there any opportunity for them to take up all those reserves as a slate or have I punished?
Well, I was, no, I was about to ask that question of our city attorney. Can we, can we do them all in one ball of wax or do we have to do them separately?
Give me one second to look at them again.
While you do, while you do that, do we have any members of the public who want to comment on the discussion we've just been having?
Thank you. I'm looking for any raised hands from our audience members or any emailed public comments. And there is no public comment.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a quick comment.
Yeah, please.
All right. Dan, I, I, I just wanted to throw out there that, you know, I've been on the council, you know, a little over a year now. When I came on, the council had what I considered at the time to be a ridiculous amount of faith in you. You know, to just say, oh, Dan will do it right. Don't worry about it. And I have to say, you have earned that from me over this past year, the way you have handled the pandemic and our finances and the way that we are positioned right now, considering what our country has just gone through. I, I just want you to know I have complete faith in you at this point. And I think you really, so I just want to thank you.
Yeah, and I, I think that's shared by all of us.
You know.
So I think that it's fine to take them up as a slate. However, I do want to make one of the most annoying reminders that a city attorney has to make, which is that because the resolutions affect Dan's compensation and the compensation of the department head.
Right.
There is actually a requirement to make an announcement of the changes to the compensation. And unfortunately, the state law doesn't differentiate between increase, decrease, or restoration to what was previously authorized. I know, Dan, you covered it, but if you want to just briefly summarize what the effect of the resolutions would be for yourself and for the department heads, I think that'll be adequate.
Sure. One of the resolutions amends my contract to restore my salary to what it was before a 10% cut was imposed that began on July 1st. And so the amount is stipulated, I can call it up, excuse me, do I need to figure out what the amount is, Guy? I can't. All right. And then the managers all also experienced a 10% reduction in their base pay. So this would raise their base pay by 10%, effectively restoring it to where it was on, prior to the, to the implementation of the cut. The other res though, even though I know you said enough stipulated, but I'll remind everybody is to end the furlough program for our, our full-time hourly employees. So they've been essentially furloughed and taking 10% off, 10% time off as unpaid during this period.
So we're, we're restoring that. I mean, that's, that's the point of these, at least some of these resolutions. Okay, anything else, Guy? You need to get out in the air?
You can, you can consider a motion to adopt resolutions 1021, 1121, 1221, 1321, and 1421.
I will entertain such a motion.
I'll make that motion to adopt, to adopt resolution 1021, 1121, 1221, 1321, and 1421.
I was second in motion.
Kind of musical. Okay, I think we need a roll call.
Councilmember Candell?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson?
He's on the road.
Uh, yes, Gabe.
Oh, there is.
Councilmember Way?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Homer?
Yes.
Mayor Hara?
Yes. Motion is approved.
And Mr. Mayor, before we move on, I appreciate all the accolades and I just want to point my, my digital finger at Administrative Service Director Kathy Orm, who lets me be up here and look really good and then goes and pours through all these numbers for me. So.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kathy.
We, we, we all know that. We know, we know Kathy does all the hard work and you just take all the accolades and that's fine. But we appreciate all the contributions of our, our wonderful staff and management.
It's all a team effort. This is Kathy.
Well, you're, you're a highlight of our team, so we appreciate everything you do, Kathy.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so I think that wraps up 8.1A on the mid-year budget review. So that goes to be mid-year capital improvement program review.
And I'm going to turn the matter over to Public Works Director Julian Skinner.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council and members of the public. Julian Skinner, I'm the Public Works Director for the City of Larkspur. And so I'll be attempting to share my screen here. Okay, are we good?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I'll be, I have a brief presentation. This is a mid-year capital improvement program adjustment request. So there's a budget amendment resolution for you to consider. As the city manager mentioned, we're coming upon the budget cycle for next year. So in the coming months, we'll be back before you with a more elaborate capital improvement program presentation that'll go into more details with the projects for the presentation tonight for the budget amendment. I'm just going to concentrate on the, the dollar amounts and the projects that require adjustment at this time. So as you recall, the capital improvement program for this year was adopted back in June of 2020. It includes 22 active projects. There are more projects in the list that are not currently being worked on. And so where we are today, we have five of those, 22 projects have been completed. And we do also have two ongoing projects that we're recommending some budget adjustments for in advance of next year's budget. So the five completed projects, we had a pipe repair in the Larkspur Marina Lagoon. That project was completed. Last summer's pavement rehabilitation project, also under the Measure B program, the ADA ramps, the accessibility improvements project were completed. And then a couple of bike and ped path projects, one on Magnolia, a dordie between Dordie and Post was completed. And then we completed a phase of the Dordie Drive pathway by Redwood High School. So those five projects have been completed. We finalized all the accounting, all the money that was spent on those projects. And so the budget amendment includes reconciling the budget amounts for those projects with the amounts of funds that were actually spent. There are two projects that are ongoing that we're asking for a budget amendment for. One is the Court de Lejo storm drain improvement. We included paving a veal a pause with that project after we installed the storm drain, rather than waiting until next year's paving project. We feel, felt it would be better for the residents on that street, rather than suffering through two consecutive seasons of construction to include the paving in that project. And so there were not paving funds in the project. And so they asked us to transfer money out of the paving project into the Court de Lejo project to pay for the paving that we did after we completed the storm drain installation. The other ask, and this is similar to what we've done in years past, is at your next meeting, you'll be considering approving this year's paving project, which is Measure B Group Three, going out for construction. And typically what we've done in the past is as soon as that project goes out to construction, we start working on next year's project. In this case, that would be Measure B Group Four. And so in your CIP budget, that, that project is funded next year. And so the ask here is to bring forward the money to start the design on that project sooner rather than later during this fiscal year. So that's, those are the two projects that will continue that we're asking for budget amendments for. And so there's a series of allocations and transfers detailed in the budget amendment. As I mentioned, it will close out four, sorry, five projects and reconcile those expenses with budgeted amounts. It'll adjust those two projects. And then the net result of all of these budgetary actions that you take tonight actually will take out $4 million from the CIP. So the net result of all those actions is project expenditures $4 million less than was budgeted. That's not all money saved. Some of that is due to streets and the paving project that were planned this year that were deferred for various reasons to next year's project, but there were some cost savings. So of that $4 million in savings, we estimate about 65% of that will get pumped into next year's CIP. But about 35% of that is actually money saved where we realized costs less than those budgeted during this year's projects.
Oh, that's terrific.
This is a detailed list. This is what's in your resolution, all of these actions. There are various funding sources in all of these projects. And so the staff report and the resolution does detail out all of the actions that are required to balance all of these funds. They're listed here by project. These are the, the first two, two on this sheet are projects that are going to be closed, as well as the first three on the next sheet. And the last two are the projects that are going to be carried over. The items in green are kind of duplicative from the sheet before, because as we transfer out of one project, we transfer into another. So that's why they're highlighted in green. So that's, that's the, the summary of, of the request tonight. I'm happy to go into any further detail or answer any questions.
Okay, great. Thanks. Any questions from council on this? This is a, this is very good report. And I'm trying to switch over my screen here. I don't see any raised hands from council members. Oh, yes, I do. Vice Mayor Homer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Director Skinner. I tracked every detail of your presentation and I'm ready to make a motion to support it.
Well, before we do that, any other, any other questions or comments? Anyone from the public, Allison?
Looking for any raised hands from our audience members or any emailed public comment. And there is no public comment.
Okay, well, I think our Vice Mayor has moved the adoption of resolution 1521.
I feel like, I feel like I have my finger on the pulse of the community in making this motion to support this program.
Yes, I think you're right. So do I have a, do I have a second? Second it, so we have a second, then let's do a roll call.
Councilmember Candell?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson?
Yes.
Councilmember Way?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Homer?
Yes.
Mayor Hara?
Yes, the motion is approved.
Thank you for all your work, Director Skinner.
Yeah, especially that, that, that those cost savings were kind of surprising good news, so. Terrific. You guys do a, a great job. So I think that concludes that agenda item. And I think the next one is 8.2, which is just an update on city activities and finances with regards to the COVID-19. And that, I think we'll send that back to Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As many, the council members have probably noticed, there's been some changes with the parklet, particularly the one in front of Rully is more of a. Um, it's more of a structure now. So I've had a lot of questions saying, you know, are these permanent? What's going on? So I wanted to use this as an opportunity to provide clarification that council and the public. Uh, we've been very uh, clear with all of the restaurants that are in the public right of way that these are temporary authorizations and that making investments, they need to be prepared to remove them if the council, when it goes through a process to consider, uh, parklets for the long term decides that you don't want to have parklets. Additionally, we've warned them that uh, if it becomes a permanent program, it's likely to have some level of design standards. And so, uh, what they're doing now may or may not be consistent with those design standards. They're all aware of that. They've had that point emphasized. Um, the parklet at Left Bank has an approval through November. The parklet for uh, Rully's and for Pico have approval through June. Staff is working diligently right now, uh, with a consultant on some uh, various issues around the Magnolia corridor. And so one of the things they're helping us do is put together some parklet policies so that we can bring those to the public and the council for discussion and consideration before that June uh, deadline is reached for the, the two parklets. So that they'll have an opportunity uh, to cope with whatever decisions are made. So I just wanted to get that out there because we've got a lot of questions about that. And then I just wanted to let the council know that uh, we continue to talk with Cordamadera about some opportunities that the pandemic's given rise to for more coordination and collaboration between our staff. And so, uh, potentially we'll be bringing you some shared service opportunities in the near future in several of our departments. And I think going back to Vice Mayor Homer's question, that sometimes you have to sort of reach these odd places to, before you can start to see these opportunities. So our recreation departments are talking, our public works divisions are, are talking. Uh, we're talking the building, we're talking code enforcement. And I think there's a lot of opportunity to, to work together, uh, coming out of this. I, I wanted to share that because that'll all be captured in our budget and be, uh, I, I think a, a big boon for everyone. So. With that, Mr. Mayor, that can be my update for now.
Well, and, and thank you very much for that. I mean, I've been getting questions. I'm sure others on the council have been quitting, getting questions about the permanency of some of these parklet operations that have been set up and how long they're going to last, what the process is going to be going forward into the future. And um, you know, I, my messaging has been um, that they're, they're transitory. Um, and we'll, we'll deal with the issues as they come along. But it's important to, for people not to have expectations that they're going to be there forever.
Well, I think it's important, Mr. Mayor, just while I'm emphasizing that we hold some public meetings and we hear, you know, our intent is to give the community a chance to weigh in, not just the business community, but
Yeah.
the residents about whether they like this idea, don't like it, what they do and don't like about what they're seeing occur. I think those are all important things to
Yeah.
hear from the public.
Yeah, and a, and a, and a conversation worth continuing because it's, you know, this is a new world that we've grown accustomed to living in and um, that's a conversation worth having. But uh, people, they shouldn't have any automatic expectations about what the outcome of that conversation will be.
I.
Any other comments, Catherine?
I think we, we need to be flexible on this matter. Uh, this new variant that's coming out is being seen in Marin County and we may be going through a cycle of closures again. I mean, I don't want to be should bring, bring all the negative in there, but we need to be supportive of our businesses that may through the summer and in the fall, maybe going down to more restrictive measures. And if we have the flexibility to allow them to continue to operate in the public space for the time being, maybe we should um, consider that that's a possibility.
Of course. Yeah, and I think, I think that's our policy. Anything else from the council on this? Um, so that's just a, that was just an, an update, it's not an action item. So I think that can, unless there's anything else from the council and the, anything on public, from the public on this?
I'm looking for any raised hands from our audience members. And there's no public comment.
Okay. Okay, well, with that, I think, uh, with thanks, we'll close agenda item uh, eight point two. And now I think we need to adjourn to a closed session.
Can we take about a five-minute uh, break in between?
That would be perfect. Let's do that.
Thank you. And we have to log on to another, another platform, right?
Do we have to do that, Allison?
That's correct. You should have a link to a separate meeting for the closed session. If you don't have that, please send me an email and I'll make sure that.
Okay. I'm sure, sure we do, but.
See you guys in five minutes.
All right. Allison, I don't know if you're still on, but I don't, I'm not seeing a link.
Okay, I will forward that to your email. And so it should be um, shortly at the top of your.
Okay, so that's to the City Larkspur email?
Yes.
Okay. And then when we finish the closed session, we just go back to the.
Yes. Come back to the regular Zoom meeting from that thing, your normal panelist link.
Okay. I think I'm seeing your email now. Okay, there it is.